Hey, we get to see ourselves? Get to see ourselves on TV? Get that in.
Good, how are you doing?
Good. How's Barry doing? I'm getting some, uh... What's going on here?
Bill or me?
Yeah, I killed.
Very last meeting with Wilford Street.
All right, we're gonna jump right into this. An application for a home business at Fort Keep Road. It would appear. William Slaven is looking to open up a, uh... A home base business. Residents on Fort Keep Road. He's gonna, uh... Cut and clean, uh, oil tanks. I think more than anything, he's just gonna be running his operation from that location. So why don't we set a, uh... Special permit?
Make the motion. Set a public hearing code.
Four K Road.
Four K Road. Mr. Slaven. September of seventeen, seven thirty.
Fourteen to seven thirty.
Fourteen to seven thirty.
Fourteen to seven thirty.
All those. James Second, it's all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't need to hear it if you don't use a microphone.
Do we have to do the world call?
We have to do a road call now that we're, uh, live. Just do it.
Okay. Who's going?
We had a motion on the floor from, uh... John Van der Seuss to, uh...
Yes.
Schedule a special permit for September fourteenth at seven thirty.
James Quirk, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Say your name and say aye.
James Quirk, aye.
John Van der Seuss, aye.
Down the other side, roll the ride.
The Lambrosino line. And we've got till seven fifteen for continuation of a public... And special permit for forty-nine Milford Street. We got that back again. Okay, once again, uh, during public hearings, if anyone's recording, we need to know about it. Obviously, the town is recording. The, uh... Uh, we use Robert's rules, they don't allow any interruptions. We'll give the applicant a chance to... Uh, further along where they're at and, uh... Then the board will ask its questions. Allow the community, um, to speak. Lastly, we... We will hold the phone calls and chats to the very end. And, um... And then we'll allow them, if anybody's out there, we will allow them to ask a question. Easy, shouldn't be much cross talk, so I don't need to worry about that tonight, I guess. Jeff, have you reached the, uh... Got a response here from G H on outstanding items. Have those been resolved, or...
For forty-nine Milford Street?
Yep.
Yes, the engineering comments have been addressed.
Okay. Uh, is, uh... Is he coming, or John?
He didn't say he.
Oh, that's Bob, right? Where... Where is this?
Willow Brook. Myself.
Oh, yeah, I... You know what? I haven't done a site visit there. Jeff, have you been over to Willow Brook Lane at all?
We haven't been there for quite a while. Um, top course of paving went down.
And stuff, right?
And sidewalks were paved, I believe. I... They were at least bindered, but I thought they were even topped. It's been a number of months, or even goes back to late last year when some work was done.
But it wasn't done. It wasn't completed yet.
Well, I haven't seen as-built plans yet. Um, there was a lot of progress made last year.
Could you, uh, reach out to Mike and, uh... Is that what that?
Okay, with completing the project, right down to the last...
Yeah, 'cause it looks like they're... They're trying to determine, you know, the issue with the bond. I mean, we've extended this guy just... I mean, that thing's like ten years old now.
Okay.
And I think they just want it resolved, but...
I didn't come prepared to speak about this.
That's all right.
But I'll look... I'll look into it. I... I know there was a lot of progress, construction progress made last year. Um, but it's... For example, the overgrown basin has... Was... All the brush was cut the year before, and I thought the grass was up and growing. Um... The top course pavement on both the sidewalk and the street, I believe, took place. But let me see what's left. I thought we made an adjustment to the surety estimate after the... The work of last year, but again, I'll refresh my memory and...
All right, yeah, if you... If you could just follow up on that, I'd appreciate it, Jeff. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Got about three minutes to the, uh... Beginning of the, uh...
Do we have any minutes to approve or anything?
Uh, I don't think so. I think we'll take... This is our first meeting back. I think we'll take care of that stuff at the next meeting. We got about four, uh... Seven minutes to approve.
Want to talk about the stone wall at Applewood?
What's that?
Talk about the stone wall at Applewood?
Um, we can discuss it. I... Maybe Bob's not gonna be here tonight.
Okay.
He addresses drawing because of the... Them making a adjustment to the road, so it didn't flash in the house. I said they wanna put, uh, a stone wall at the end on each side, but one of them... Is in the easement. It's like both of them is in the easement.
What the hell?
Yeah, one's a little bit in the easement, the other one's entirely. Um... That, Jeff?
Stone walls at intersections... Two things come into play, at least. One is site distance. There should be no impairment of site distances, um, for vehicles turning into or out of the new subdivision street. And second of all, in most cases, towns don't want the walls within right-of-way of the existing public way of the new subdivision street. Uh, it's just one more impediment for the use of the shoulder of the road, as well as, um... Future use of the road, uh, shoulders for utilities and such. And, um, maintenance and visual impairments.
This one's like, uh... I think he says like nine to ten feet off the road.
Uh, well, again, it's a question of...
I mean, you get your five-foot sidewalk and then, um...
Provide a sketch of where it would be.
Yeah. I mean, maybe... I don't think site distance is gonna be an issue. He's got site distance lines. I don't think they encumber site distance at all, but, um...
The wall on the right?
My only concern with this, Jeff, is he was willing to, at the time, was to, um... He was willing to move that road out of... So it didn't flash on the house across the street.
Okay.
At Abbequest.
Yep. Yep. Because what I'm seeing is one of the walls is just a little bit into the right-of-way, the wall on the right. The wall on the left is entirely in this new subdivision right-of-way.
Yeah.
And I'd... I'd recommend that, um... If you be able to offer, uh... Any comments they might have about something like this being in the right-of-way. For fear of the town has to take care of it, maintain it.
All right, I'll talk to Alan.
Or whatever, in the... In the future.
Sure. Yeah, I don't think Alan will have a problem with it, but I'll... I'll check with Alan first.
They are set back quite a way from, um...
Okay. Yeah, that... That's why, and we're, you know, he had worked with us to move the road. Um, you know, I certainly, uh... If Alan's okay with it, I don't wanna make it a... Such a modification to a, you know, pretty good-sized plan, so... Okay, I think we're ready. Um... If I could just have a minute, I'm gonna go back to where we were as far as I... And you can correct me if I get anything wrong, but I think at the prior discussion, um... Some of the items, and I'm gonna refer right to... Conditions that we had talked about, uh, the valet parking. Uh, we resolved the residential commercial. Uh, stormwater management, I think, was still outstanding at that time, or... Or no, we had that, okay. Uh... Smoking grease trap plant to the BOH, that's all. Has that been submitted at all?
I'm... No, it hasn't. The septic plant, no, it has not yet.
Um... About water from Milford, did you guys ever obtain that?
Uh, that... We... We have the, uh, the permission to tie into the twelve-inch line under the street.
Yeah, I believe you provided it at the time, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, smoking. I don't recall what we discussed there, but...
I've... I've got four items on here, if you'd like to...
Yeah, why don't you take it away?
McKinnon, Gary, and Alan. Tom, would you introduce everybody?
Sure. My name... My name is Tom Lesser. I'm from Lesser Newman, and this is my partner, Michael Alio. Here, here. Last February, actually.
I think it was.
Now, on...
March ninth, actually.
March ninth, and we submitted... We submitted documents on...
Oh, that's right, March.
On March five, that were reviewed by your engineer, Graves Engineering, and he sent a letter dated April twenty, two thousand and twenty. And from an engineering point of view, he acknowledged that all the requirements had been met, from his purview.
Okay. Um, well, I do have your letter. And I do have Graves' letter, so I... I know there were some outstanding items. Uh, I'm not sure too what the date line was, when they were resolved or when they were. But it looks like from Jeff, it had been resolved. Is that correct?
That... That's correct. Mr. Chairman, we issued a follow-up review letter dated April twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Um, looking... After reviewing plans, revised plans, our engineering-related comments have been addressed. There were some zoning bylaw comments that are also in our letter, non-engineering issues, but nevertheless, um, the applicant's team responded to them, uh, with respect to, I guess, some... Action or some other action that I wasn't aware of that may have revised those bylaws. So those points are still carried through in our letter, but they're not engineering issues, and I'm not in a position to speak one way or the other if they... Those things have been actively, uh, actually resolved. But the civil engineering aspect, the stormwater management, so on and so forth, plan presentation, plan content, uh, those... Those civil engineering related items have in fact been addressed.
Just so we can get to, you know, move this along, um, do you wanna refer to those few items that... That are zoning issues or...
Certainly. Um, reading from my letter of April twentieth, um, comment number two, the lot... Had to do with the lot being in two zoning districts.
Yeah, well, I think we've addressed that. I don't think that one's...
Very well, okay. On the... Page, there was, um, comment number eight about the submittal of, uh, elevation plans and the height of the structure. And again, that, um, we understand that the plans would be reviewed by the planning board, and, um, there was, um, response about the required height. It's part of the, uh, a court decision or something to that effect. Again, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, I mean, that is in... The height of the building is a major concern of mine. Uh, you're gonna go down that road with the building inspector anyway. He's gonna provide a permit if it goes above the, uh... Neighbor line of the town, so you're gonna address that with him. Uh, I think it's thirty-five feet is the height of the building.
That's correct.
That's... That's town Y, so... Anything else, or is that, uh...
Um... Number eleven, um, they had to do with the square footage, the footprint of the building.
Yeah.
Again, the bylaw spoke to two thousand square foot maximum. They're proposing a building larger, and again, um, I'm a...
I think... I think that... That's still in that, uh, current bylaw?
Uh, it was in the... To the best of my knowledge, uh, it's still in the bylaw, um, but nevertheless, I understand this building square footage. Um, response was it was, uh, had to do with the... That was also addressed in the court decision.
Do you have a copy of that court... Only, and I'm just asking the question because we... I don't have it.
A copy of the court decision?
Yeah, regarding the two thousand square feet.
Absolutely. Um, and, um, it's still in your bylaw. Just your bylaw.
Yeah, I know, I'm gonna have to, uh...
Been updated for some reason.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know what? I think we updated some, but I was only given a certain amount of information when I updated. I didn't get it all. So I think we need to go back and revise it. All the information in one place.
Sure, and, um... There's an extra copy of the First Circuit decision.
Can I keep that, or...
Absolutely.
Oh, beautiful. Lot of the information. Thank you. So that'd be good reading. And basically, they, um... They made a judgment that the two thousand square feet wasn't...
Correct, 'cause it was different from every other commercial establishment.
That's all right.
Invented.
Yeah.
You couldn't differentiate.
I got you. Yep, let's save that.
Uh, moving on, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Number twelve, uh, again, the bylaw calls for fifty-foot vegetated buffer for budding properties, and there was discussion about an overruling by the court. Um, I'm not in a position to speak to that.
Um, there was... There was a... You originally had a special permit procedure. You had to obtain a special permit.
Correct.
And as part of the special permit, there were certain requirements that had to be met. In the court, and it's a different decision, I'll have happiness to give you this one, too.
Gee, you're just coming... Hey, thank you, sir.
Was illegally dis... Because I'm violent, because that was... Was... Was improper, the whole special permit bylaw goes out, which included the fifty-foot vegetation. Twenty feet from the property line, any parking. As... As your bylaw calls for, I think, in two point oh three.
Well, I... Yeah, at the time you filed originally, I think that's what it was, twenty. It is now fifty, current.
Changed the...
Yeah, we've changed it entirely across town.
Twenty at that point in time, and... And... And there's just one little section where there's not fifty feet, where the driveway comes in a little bit.
Okay, so the remainder of it is pretty much fifty. Okay. Now, where'd we leave it with the roadway going down the side of the building?
Uh... Is it at all, or is it just...
Um, there... There... It's being... You're being televised, be careful.
So I don't know where that...
Which, where's the camera up here?
So I will... I... The people at home are gonna have a hard time seeing it, because these are not high-end cameras.
Yeah.
But you need to use...
My name is Dale McKinnon from Gary and Holland. Let me just, uh...
That might slide off that piece, does it? Maybe just a little easier? Big cherry in that thing?
Thank you, that's a lot better. I, uh... We have a letter of March nineteenth, Mr. Chairman. Do you have that letter, March?
Uh, March nineteenth, uh... The...
I don't.
We don't have the March nineteenth in front of us, no.
Okay, let... Let me read you the March nineteenth.
Yeah, go ahead, you can read it.
Dear members of the board, the following submittal includes stormwater report or revised plans to address the stormwater port and items that were discussed at the public meeting on March ninth, two thousand and twenty. Items to note on the revised plans. Outside, uh, smoking area, and I'll go to the board after this, but I just wanna read the letter. Outside smoking area comprised of a six-foot-tall stockade fence along the north side of the building. The architectural plans propose a door at this location, and the fence and the small light are added to the site plants. That's your question about the smoking. This was a smoking area that was discussed. Two barrier gates are to... To be controlled by valets to prevent car traffic to the side and rear of the building. I think that was your second item.
Yep.
The grading at the driveway was further revised, so the concern was that this was on the steep side, so we... We... We decreased out as... As much as we could. And then the grass short channel that is in this area here, uh, formerly called a biofilter swale, swale, was added to the outlet of the rear catch basin outlet to address the requirements of the eighty percent TSS removal. So let me go through the, uh, plans. If I go to sheet three, it's the proposed site plan. Might have trouble doing this.
Some just get the shock of their life.
All right, so starting at the end, we were... We talked about the biofilter swale, or this grass channel that was put in on the, uh... On the top of the plan. This was to address the, uh... There's a proposed catch basin in this rear, uh, parking area.
Yeah.
And that's to make sure that we provide the, uh, TSS removal of eighty percent. Uh, the other item was that the... The grading, like we said, was changed at... At this front area. There's, uh, proposed, um, across, uh... We're gonna allow the free parking here, but the... The... There's two, uh, movable, uh, gates that are hand-moved that would allow the valets to open and close that area. That way, this area would not be subject to movement in and out of the rear of the building. And the, uh, fourth item was the, uh... The fourth item was the smoking area, so we showed a smoking area. We've added another small light in that smoking area, and that's on the, uh, uh, north side of the building, uh, for that purpose. Items are all shown on sheet three of eight. Were revisions that we made to, uh, satisfy the questions that, uh... The questions that came up at the last, uh, public meeting.
So is this the buffer here that, um, goes to twenty feet?
Yes.
The grade we came up with coming from the road down, percent?
Uh, it was less than four percent. I don't recall exactly what it was.
And what type of plank things are you... Plating along that edge?
Along this edge here, we've got, uh... Let me go... We've got, uh... Along this edge here, we've got, let me go, we've got a, first of all, we've got this black line here, and that represents a stormwater diversion, and the purpose of that is to make sure that we've captured the water and it's not flowing across into the lot, so that we didn't have it go across the asphalt. So the plantings along that end are proposed to be, let me look at the landscaping plan. All right, so there's a symbol on here, and I'm looking for it right now. No, I don't. Proposed 18 eastern white pine, there's some eight pyramidal aravati, and then there's six flowering pear that basically are along that side.
Were the aravatis in that, that area right in between?
Yes.
Okay, that's how I figured. Another question I had. I forgot what it was.
Have they looked at this, that they can get around okay and everything?
I, you know, I have not talked to them since our meeting on March 9th. But what they had said was that the, the area in here was adequate for their use.
I remember that.
We talked about some way, I'm not sure how this could be done, but limiting people back to their vehicles in that back line.
That's what the valet...
Okay, they're gonna manage that.
Right.
All right. Let me just make him all of that.
Nothing outside the building, no entertainment outside the building?
What kind of containment?
No, no drinking, food?
No.
Nothing outside the building?
That's correct. The, I imagine the smoking area would, but that's...
Yeah, smoking would be outside, I understand that. But no food, that picture?
Good, when we're done this, if you could just send me a list of what you're understanding as far as the conditions we've talked about.
Yeah, why don't I just give you, I mean, I thought I'd sent you this letter, but...
Yeah, I just go to do the decision, and I have all the correct information.
Will there be a gate across this park in what, when nobody's there, like half-hours, so people can't drive in, or?
He says he's got two gates.
There is a gate right there. I don't know.
Okay.
Can you tell me if that'll be in use? I'm not even sure. It will be. There is a gate that can be closed.
I see reference to valet parking, and I just, you know, I need to concur that people...
Small.
People aren't gonna be hanging out in their valet area. That should be restricted to valet only.
Correct.
Okay, beautiful.
No customers will be allowed past the gate.
The remainder of the board's the questions. Gentlemen, Jeff, are you satisfied with, okay?
I don't have microphones, so what?
Yeah. Jeff noted in the affirmative. Any other members?
Any fire protection inside sprinkler system or anything?
Has this been addressed with a, I don't recall, for fire protection?
This is required by the building code. It hasn't been specifically addressed. Your building inspected.
Yeah, that's a building, that's a, it's gonna happen. If you get town water, you certainly got enough water, so you don't need a system.
Does the fire chief sign up on the radius?
He looked at it, the fire chief, I mean, the, it is the benefit to have already gotten the fire chief's approval, because he still needs to get that approval from the fire chief, the radius of the net and stuff, so the vehicles can, can go, you know, encompass the building properly. I know when he was here, he thought that the plan looked fine.
Just don't recall, it was so long ago, I don't recall what he said on that.
Yeah, he asked some questions about the road down the side. Specifically, I don't remember, but I don't believe he raised issues with...
He had made some reference to something on the right side of the building.
Yeah, that's the road that goes down that...
Just please refresh me on that. I don't remember what...
This is a crushed stone area that's, I believe it's 20 feet wide, yes, it's 20 feet wide off the...
Yeah, he was worried about maintenance, I think, correct?
Yeah.
That you guys are gonna make sure that his vehicles get down. The bottom line is, our expectation from a town point of view is that you're gonna meet what the fire chief...
Yes. Not an issue.
Jeff, do you see anything there that would impede the fire? Fire's turning radius and stuff.
Mr. Chairman, I was going through my notes, and the fire chief was here at the March 9th meeting, and we were talking about the 20-foot-wide crushed stone area, and from my point of view, not speaking for the chief, but my point of view as an engineer, a fire engine could, in fact, make, enter the driveway, drive down, and pull alongside the building if it so chooses, provided there's no obstructions in that 20-foot-wide crushed stone area. So I, from a, from a point of view, with vehicles approaching the fire, they certainly can approach the building, provide what emergency services they need, and then as far as maneuvering to get out, you know, that's, that's after the emergency, and there is maneuvering room around, around the site, without a doubt.
Okay.
And you asked a minute ago about things other than sprinklers. I would like to let you know that what I see on the existing conditions plan is there's a fire hydrant in Milford Street, on the opposite side of Milford Street, just short of 300 feet, going up the hill toward Milford.
So you're accessing water from Milford Water Department?
Yeah, it was originally part of the...
Then the building will be sprinkled from the town water versus your own system, correct?
Only if the, he couldn't rely on the building code to answer whether it needs to be sprinkled.
Okay.
Water at the building ward?
Yeah, that's, that was my point, is there a tackle? And it appears there is, so. Would like to see that lane well-mocked as a fire lane, make it a condition, and no one, so nobody decides to park there at any time.
That'd be fine if you were making a condition.
I mean, only because of entertainment business, there are people inside there, we've seen what happened with entertainment businesses in the last 10 years, 15 years. You've got a couple hundred people inside a building, and obviously danger happens. So I would, I want to make sure that that lane is, is left open.
Absolutely, it could be a condition that's left open, and parker decided to be added
All right. We have no more questions for the board, and we're gonna open it.
I got one question. Is it gonna be a two-story building or one story?
It's, it's one story, 35 feet total height.
Okay.
Will be gone for snow removal?
No removal, good question, Barry.
All right. Best number all.
Remember what we discussed about snow removal? I don't recall...
Have we made a location for snow removal, or? I just don't want to become, snow to become a problem for the bylaw.
I think there's a plan showing that, but I don't follow it.
I should have...
I can't, I can't read this.
Yes, we have the snow storage, press and shunt on the side of the...
Five.
This is on the stage.
Three, I'm on five.
And you show the whole road in the back, and then give the rear.
I can't read it, so I can't tell you.
We need bigger print.
And then we tell them that it's too long. Where's the page?
It's down here.
There it is. Two, three, so it's right here.
So the snow storage is like right there, see that?
I see it, yep. And then it wraps all the way around?
Right.
All the way down here. That's a, yeah, I would think that would be adequate snow storage.
One other question, Mr. Chairman.
Did you see that on 3 of 8, Jeff?
I did.
Okay. Yes.
Lighting plan?
Oh, you know what? That's what I forgot to ask. Did you guys come up with lighting plan?
Yes.
Okay, it has been approved, or?
Also adding in the small light.
Yeah, we've got a lighting problem in Mendon, we got too big a light.
What page do you want there?
This is page, page 6 of 8.
Looks fine, Mr. Chairman. Looking at the property.
So it's staying within the bracket?
Yes, sir.
All of the light bulbs?
No, we have 20, okay.
I have nothing else.
That's it?
I have nothing else.
Done. Jimmy, Jeff, any more questions? Put it to the public. Do we have anybody? Do we have anybody on call?
There's a TV one, yeah, I can have...
Something out there, tell them now's the time either to call in, or...
Somebody up there has her hand up.
Have a hand raised behind us.
I don't got pictures, so.
Hi.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So it looks like from the sketches that that smoking...
Dale, name and address, please.
Call name and address.
Virginia Van Slet, 32 Crestview Drive.
Yep.
And my question is, it looks like the smoking area is going to be closest to the residential area, is that true?
Left side of the building, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm on the left side, looking at the building.
All right. I understand that there's going to be a fence around there, but is there going to be somebody to monitor how loud people get when they're out there? Or are they going to limit the number of people that can be out there at a single time?
You guys want me to...
We will, we will be, we will be monitoring that area.
Okay. You know, certainly...
How big is the area?
It would be monitoring outside of the building.
Six by eight.
Six by eight, so realistically, how many people can be out in a six by eight area at one time?
Sounds like it's pretty small, so probably gonna be a few people out there. The, I mean, the session is, if you feel it's getting rowdy, we're trying to keep people out of the parking lots and away from the residential areas. Your right is to call the police department and have them check, make sure that it's following. You know, that it isn't overly noisy. We don't have a noise ordinance in town, and at this time... Hard for the board to impose something on them. Is that a chat yet, or is that an entire conversation? All right, with all that being said, I don't...
I don't know what questions, I'm shocked.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there are any outstanding issues at this time.
All right.
All right, so I need a motion on the table?
Make a motion to approve the special permit for 49 Milford Street.
And site plan.
And site plan.
Second.
James Quirk motion.
John Vanslo's second.
All those in favor, aye?
James Quirk, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye?
John Vanslo's, aye.
Barry Adrola, aye. All right, I'll just let it rest.
Motion to close the public hearing for 49 Milford Street. Quirk motion.
John Vanslo's, second.
James Quirk, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye.
John Vanslo's, aye.
Barry Adrola, aye. Outside the meeting, I don't know if you guys want to write the decision, or you want me to write it? They stupidly write decisions on that, stuff like this. I can, I can do it, just might be a few weeks.
We could talk to Gail, and she can give us a, a decision that you've written in the past.
Okay, I can do that. If not, I can come up with a model decision somewhere. I mean... The large, so.
I'm happy to get one of your previous... I'd like to make it in conformance with what you've done in the past.
Yep, I've got, like, we just did a... Yeah, but I mean, he's just looking for something with, that has the drill down on, on what we're looking for, a scope. Get some pretty good.
Just talk to Alson Dawson, we'll go from there.
Sounds good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for, uh, making it so comfortable. We try.
Good luck.
I knew it was going to be, you know, it's easier, wouldn't it, though?
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. This is the first one I've been to in person in a few months.
All right. Got the answers now, right?
I don't know. I hope so. I think on, uh, the emerald. It works better.
The site, we need to go.
Yeah. Yeah, these are fresh today. Oh, Dan, I can send it, I can email them to you.
You have my account on speech here.
Okay, let's, um...
You know, it's our AP, so the maps are hard to see.
Is that for me?
Yes, please. Thank you, John.
You're welcome. How are you?
Good, thanks. How are you?
I'm good.
The last one you sent, the elevations plan.
I sent you the elevations and, uh, site plan all in one. The only difference of the site plan that I sent was, I, uh, one of Jess' comments was to put, um, his phone number on all the sheets and I had put it on sheet two, but didn't put it on all of them. So I sent you a new set that has the phone number on all sets.
Hope you didn't throw your bad idea. Dan, what's your, uh, Dan?
John, just so you know, the telephone numbers, I've never tried to take a ticky-tack approach to our reviews. For the number of communities, for various reasons, the most common one is with erosion control plans, if there's a problem, there's a phone number, phone call without making...
Yeah, no problem.
So I've adopted that as part of our review, whether it's site plan or erosion control plans, to make sure, little pieces of information like that. Yeah, so when I updated sheet two, I changed that one and I didn't change the rest. And then I caught it when I was printing them out today. So I changed them all and sent it back out to you. In my mind, I changed it on all of them.
All right. So I just sent him what should be the final version. Maybe less the phone number, maybe not. No, I don't charge you for that. It's a lot of vacation even. Should have achieved. This is, um...
Body shop.
This is my, I'm playing on the same lot as, um...
Cow wash.
Cow wash, it's all a repair business.
All a repair business, yes. That's all on lot?
Yeah. All right.
Yep. I was given extras of these small plans in case you need them for future.
Gravel drive on the right side?
Yeah, there already is gravel there. That was depicted growing on, that was one of Jeff's comments on the existing conditions plan. I showed that as pavement. Uh, but it is gravel on, it's already gravel all the way around the back of the building and on the, on the back and on the side.
In the two buildings?
Uh, 15 feet. I checked with the, uh, fire chief on that and he said I could put it at 15 feet.
Everything is going in that, um, that, that lot, right?
I, I didn't hear, the painting?
I said everything is going to be going in that, the lot there for the cars?
Yes.
No pots around or anything?
No. No, so if I may add? Well, let me go through the site layout. This is the new 4,050 square foot site building, uh, auto body building. Um, one of the comments that Jeff had at the last meeting was, I needed to store some snow storage. I'm now storing snow storage along this side, this side, and an area here in the back behind these spaces. And then I'm also showing some additional here on these three spaces. Um, the site requires 50 square spaces. We have 50. So if they need extra storage, they could store snow on those three spaces there. In addition to that, at the last meeting, the board was concerned about a fenced-in area for, um, any cars that are damaged. I've shown a gravel lot in the back here fenced in with either a six-foot slatter chain link or a six-foot solid vinyl fence. Um, that would be accessed through the side of the building here down this gravel drive. It would be gated right at the opening. And then for pot storage, he's going to store, uh, not in all non-flammable pots between the two buildings. I'm showing a gate at each side and they would be able to store, uh, store pots in there for the auto body, um, business. Um, I've included a loading and unloading area hatched here. Um, I fixed the parking spaces on the existing conditions plan. There's four new spaces going here, including one handicap. Out of the site, that's, the site is laid out like it is. Um, I did do a, uh, I did add landscaping. I'll show you the colored one on the landscaping. Uh, we've dressed up the whole site. I've added landscape islands on, uh, page seven of the new plans. The plants are all called out. I've shown three in the front here, um, three on this side, some going up the side, some bigger three-inch, uh, brachio piers for street trees. And that should definitely dress up the site a lot more than it is now. It's pretty plain.
Very, now, yeah, because I don't think you're finished with the original landscaping.
No. So the original landscaping just had some individual trees like scattered around, nothing like this. So this, this will definitely dress it up even more than the original site plan.
Yes, because...
I was waiting, uh, for this building, but I...
What's your accessibility for that fenced-in area in the back? How are you going to?
They're coming down that road to the side.
Coming down the back. Uh, and there's already a gravel drive along the whole back of the building. They would just bring the cars. So what I, what I did is, if you look on the existing condition, there's six spots here. I removed the last two spots so they have access to bring the cars straight up and in.
Let me ask you a question now. What's the radius inside that fenced-in area?
No, that, it's, it's 43 by, um, 65. So you have enough for a 24-foot travel lane plus an 18-foot spot to put cars in. It'll hold six to seven cars.
I'm just wondering, because if he's going to bring a, uh, ram truck down there.
Uh, he'd have to come in, drop off to a three-point to get out. But there is a 24-foot travel lane, which is a normal travel lane.
No, I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about the side.
Abyss?
With the car store just to turn a vehicle around. I mean, that's, you know, that's more...
You can't back up.
It's, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, I discussed it with, uh, Abe and that's where he wanted it.
That's fine.
That's where I put it.
Was I one gate?
Yeah, one gate to get in, just right where the storage is.
A few body shops.
Yeah, yeah. You don't think of that with the tow truck coming in.
Oh, that's it. And you, you know, you got a big vehicle, you're dropping a pickup off.
Yes. So I would, I would assume, I guess, a ram truck could back in and then drop it off and pull right out. I guess that's what they would have to do.
Well, they'd have to turn with it on the, on the truck and then face out first.
Yeah.
Or get back all the way down, I guess.
Other than that, I believe we went through the septic, how we're tying into the septic and the drainage in the last meeting quickly. If you want me to go through it again, I'll have to go through it again.
Yeah, just real quick, uh, so the community understands what we're doing.
So, uh, one of the other, I updated, uh, existing conditions plans. I went out last week, beginning of the week, went through the whole site, updated everything. I, I don't know, I haven't considered anything with Jeff, but I'm assuming you're happy with that. Was there anything I missed?
He was saying... You before, so.
Yeah. Good job. Um, Mr. Chairman, I have not looked at the revised plans. I saw the email come in with the plans on Friday and the revised, revised revised plan came in today, but I did not have an opportunity to even open it, let alone review it. Um, our follow-up review will be forthcoming.
This is working.
I did go through Jeff's letter and I sent him his letter back and I addressed every single comment down that was an issue on the existing condition plans and any other issues he had. Um, so he'll see that when he, when he gets it. And so everything was addressed. Um, let me run through this quick. So one of the comments that came to the board was that we couldn't tie into, um, town water. Um, so there is a well on site. I've located that well on site. Uh, I am more than 100 feet from the septic system. He currently uses the well for this building here for the cow wash. Um, it does 60 gallons per minute. It's very high. So he'll, he'll connect the water line, which I'm showing, coming into the, um, well tank here and then coming out of the building and back to the auto body business here. I've also updated how the electric comes in. Um, the electric comes from underground wires here, here. And now we, we will be running the new line up along the back and into this building here. Um, I've updated, uh, existing, um, the resource area plan. Um, there was one section that it didn't extend all the way to the end of the proposed grading. That's been updated on this plan. I extended it another 10 feet. I've enclosed, uh, anywhere we're doing work on the electric line all the way up and around. Um, uh, for utilities, for the septic system on the building, we're going to be putting a new septic tank in. We'll be tying into the sewer manhole. And then we'll be running this line underneath this, underneath this building and tying into the septic system. We'll be required to add two new trenches, one on this side, one on this side. It meets all the setbacks for building. That'll have to go through Board of Health anyway. That's a whole nother review. We'll be submitting to Board of Health for the septic system. There is a, a tank for the, um, floor drains in the existing building here. That's currently where we're putting the new building. We'll be moving that out and tying both buildings into that holding tank, the floor drains into the holding tank. Um... Water, uh, the only, only thing we're doing with drainage, there is a catch basin right here at the corner, uh, in the gravel lot. Um, that line would currently hit the building. So we're sliding that over a little. We're putting a new manhole here, tying into the existing draining, drainage. Yeah, he, he, I talked to him before I even put the building on there and he told me, uh, 15 feet was fine for him. 15 feet along the back for this drive aisle, 14 feet. And I said, as long as he can get to the three sides of the buildings, he was happy.
How wide is that?
We'll make sure, we'll make sure he gets keys for these two gates. So if he ever has to get into that area there, we'll have keys.
No building with a storage area?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He'll demand that.
No building with a storage area in that county don't have three sides accessible?
Well, this will be, hopefully this will be accessible.
That's storage for pot. So if he loads that up with pot, you're not getting in there.
Right. He, he said anywhere he can get to with a hose. So I'll have to talk to him about that.
Right.
If you don't, if you don't want, if, if he doesn't want you to put starch here for pots, he wants you to leave that open.
We're not going to have the storage for, for the, uh, some metal like rotters and so the guy.
Yeah. Have any pot outside?
I also added, uh, so right now there's a dumpster here, but it's not on a pad or anything. So I added a concrete pad with a full enclosure around it.
Yeah, he's talking about steel pots.
I know. Yeah, yeah. He's, he's talking about right here.
He's got a steel guy that's going to come pick that stuff up.
Yeah. So if the, if the fire department has a problem with gates there, we don't have to gate that.
Might want you to move that, if you have on a steel container there, he might want you to move that over near the dumpster area.
Yeah, he may not want anything in between there. So I can talk to him about that. That's fine. If we don't have, if we, if he doesn't want anything there, we won't put anything in there.
Enough room in the car lot to put a steel dump?
The car lot?
Yeah, back here.
Yeah.
I can extend that back.
You know, I mean, the, the shop, it's going to have the two or three guys. We're not going to keep too many cars anyway.
Yeah.
On the lot, that's...
So if you put a steel dumpster in there and just throw your steel in there and keep it out of that?
I mean, I have, if you look on that drawing, I have almost an acre and a half adjacent to that. If I want to make it bigger.
Yeah. So I can extend, I can extend this back another 20, 25 feet.
Or, or I can have the entrance from this side, but I didn't want to lose.
You'd be all right. I, I made this 65 feet. We can extend this another 20 feet.
Yeah, just do something. I think we should keep that hallway clear for Friday.
Yeah, and I leave that other section.
Fast area, you have an insurance, if hit, usually you put the card that it's total.
Yeah.
And they want to pick it up. Now you charge them $7,500 a day and they want to come as quick as...
Much better if it's fenced in late. Uh, you can try.
So another one of Jess' comments is, I haven't submitted stamp plans yet because I'm waiting to get everything done. And then once it's done, I'll submit the stamp plans for, for signature. So I can make that change. I'll push that back another 20, 25 feet.
Bring that down, Jeff. Okay.
No problem. And I'll, I'll revise the plans tomorrow and get them off to you guys.
All right. Uh, anything else?
I got it.
Um, I only want to make references, uh, because, um, I am often criticized regarding your buildings out front. Just make the whole area look as, you know, as presentable as possible. Um... As colonial as possible. Anything you do is greatly appreciated. And certainly anything you do to keep it tight would make my life a lot easier, but...
So if you look, if you do look at the building elevations, it is a steel building, but it does have a brick bottom.
I see the brick bottom.
It never has vinyl siding along the front. It doesn't have...
It's just, it's going to match the front of the garage. The same thing on the side, but the wall, you can see them from any angle. Side walls.
Oh, these are what it is.
Yeah, I know.
They're round body shops a little bit.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I understand. So we did, I did try to dress up the site quite a bit with landscaping. It's, uh...
Tell me a boy.
Similar to the landscaping we do in the relationships.
Helps for a customer base.
Is that all right?
Yeah, it helps, it helps for a customer base too. Like insurance companies when you come and look at the list. A building that, that shows a quality.
The guy who's going to run it, he is certified, you know, and, uh, there's many dealers like Audi Mercedes.
I'm sorry? Sit down, do this back.
Yeah. All right. Um, now we just, any questions from the community? Got anything going on, Dan? Now, we just, any questions from the community? Got anything going on, Dan? And if there are no further questions, and Jeff, you don't have anything concerns?
I have nothing more to offer, Mr. Chairman. I'd be glad to do a follow-up review, initiate a follow-up letter. Do know that the stormwater for the original design, the stormwater management system certainly supports this endeavor because they're basically replacing pavement with building, so there's no significant impact to stormwater management. The gravel area that is now showing up on the plans, that's going to be pretty insubstantial. Short of it is, from stormwater perspective, I'm satisfied. Our comments, there was nothing earth-shattering. There was a number of small issues that were going to be addressed, and I'm hearing they were addressed. I will confirm that.
It's a site plan.
Okay. For, I will take a motion. It will need to be as amended as requested by the hearing.
James Quirk making a motion, as amended site plan for 21 and 25 Cape Road, as amended from Graves Engineering.
By John Vansel's.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye.
John Vansel's, aye.
Barry Adrola, aye.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for 21 and 25 Cape Road. James Quirk.
John Vansel's, second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye.
John Vansel's, aye.
Barry Adrola, aye.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
John, you going to be around a minute?
John, we got to talk to you about...
You going to be around a minute?
Don't even hit his bob for the stormwater.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Close the meeting?
Yeah, we need a motion to close.
I just did. John Vansel's, motion to close the meeting.
James Quirk, second.
All of the favor?
Aye. James Quirk, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye.
John Vansel's, aye.
Barry Adrola, aye.
Man, it puts an end.